All right, we've been in closed session to discuss economic development. Is there a motion to go back into open session? Motion by Commissioner Frost, is there a second? Second by the chairman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion to go back into closed, open session is a seven-zero vote. We are at the resolution of intent to solicit bills for sale of county property. Who wants to present that one? Or who wants to?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to withdraw the resolution. Based on some new information that has come to light.
All right. There's been a motion by Commissioner Bull, a second by Commissioner Newman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is granted by seven to zero vote. Next, we have some consent items that we are going to take up. The first consent item is the resolution of intent to solicit sale of county property in another area. Dr. Green?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, a number of years ago, we leased what we call the old community school up by Alida to Irene Wertham, and they have now vacated that building. We don't have a use for it and have a, we did approach Alida to see if they had an interest, but at this point in time, there isn't an expressed interest in that area. So, we are asking you to let us put it up for upset bid. The appraised value on it's $915,000. That's where we would start the upset bid process.
All right. Any questions? Dr. Green?
I've got a, I've got a comment.
I asked to, asked to bring that forward because I wanted to make sure that the, the
public saw a continued effort to, if there's an asset that we can, we can sell or move that's going to make a positive effect to the taxpayers that we're doing that. And I think this is the third large piece of property that's sold in the last year and a half, I would say. So, maybe the last year. Probably the last year.
Yeah, probably the last year.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments or questions?
I would just say, we're making great progress on the smaller properties, too. We took, when you gave us that directive, we've systematically gone through the properties that we aren't using, and if it's big enough for a garden, it's going to belong to somebody else, and we've worked through a lot of that.
And I guess a corollary is, we do not pay rent anywhere, I think. Is that right? Is that still our policy?
Only, just temporary till Cox is built.
Okay. But we went from a pretty rent-heavy payments to no rent. We either own or we...
We'll be back out of that rental business in about two years.
Good, good.
So, could this...
Yes, ma'am.
So, this property, I mean, I definitely think that if we've got assets on the books that are, we're not utilizing, that we should clear our books and capture those assets. On the other hand, if we've got properties that could be used, put to a public good, I don't know that getting rid of them is always the best, the best thing. So, anyway, I'm not, I'm not saying that we change course. I guess my question is, do you have any idea of other uses besides? Because basically, it was, it was being used for a Chalkier Center, right?
It was. And we hadn't thought that Alida would be very interested in it. They've had a change in leadership, so we're, they're in a bit of a lull right now. We will reapproach them as we get, start through this process.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
I do think, just in principle, that we, that it's important as public officials that we kind of hold a lot of things in balance. It's not just about, you know, it's not always just about money. Sometimes it is just about money. And then, but other times, it's about these other needs that we have in our community, like, you know, the dirt...
Teacher housing.
Teacher housing. Affordable teacher housing. That's a great example. And so, we all, we all are very versed in our needs here, so there's, there's different ways to get at them, and I just think we need to kind of involve that as well. So, I'm glad y'all are pursuing that as well.
So, I've got one, I've just got one more comment. I think that, that, that all the Commissioners up here support making sure that those within the county are taken care of, especially our children, and being able, if there's, if there's buildings out there that we can, that we can use for other, other purposes, that's also going to save, you know, it's, it's going to be, it's being frugal with, with the money. Because you're actually going to be able to take a structure and use it, you know, to help the, these kids. And a lot of them, if Alida is able to acquire this, that's a perfect match for, for every goal that we have, and that will, that will be just a win-win if they, if they were able to, to acquire it. Because they just, everything they do mirrors, you know, the, the work with, that we try to do with, with children in Buncombe County. So, thanks again.
Yep. I would just say, though, as a nonprofit, coming up with a million dollars is, is not as easy a said than done. So, and that, and, and just so we're clear about, if we were to recoup that money, if we did an upside bid, and it was another entity, it doesn't have to be Chalkier, right? I mean, we're not putting that stipulation on it. And if we got that money, that money would not go necessarily to Chalkier. So, so while we, everybody might care in principle about, about children, to make that correlation that the disposal of this piece of property is going to somehow or another address our bigger issues of Chalkier, that's just a false connection.
All righty. Any other comments? Any other questions? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution of intent solicit bids for sale of the property as mentioned?
So, motion.
A motion by Vice Chair, a second by Commissioner Frost. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The resolution is adopted by seven to zero vote. Our next item is resolution authorizing acceptance of applications and approval of housing projects for the Affordable Housing Services Program.
It doesn't have to be a long, a long presentation, Donna. I'm just excited about the topic, so I wanted to...
Star Donna Cottrell is here to talk to us. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, and thank you for asking me. The resolution before you is for the Affordable Housing Services Program money. This year, we had $750,000. Most of that was program income money. But we advertised that in August, and we received the applications in September. So, we had 10 applications, and we funded seven of those 10 applications. I can go through them. We had, we're funding, and we have all the nonprofits here. We've got Mountain Housing, their emergency repair program, their self-help homeownership program, Curt Booth, Bo Ketcher Commons for some rental units, Habitat, Single Family Housing Construction, Eblin with TBRA, Mountain Housing, the East Haven Project for rental units, and ARC for its TBRA for individuals that are intellectually and emotionally challenged. And our recommended funding is for the $750,000.
Donna, could you explain to the board about program income and where it came from?
Yeah. And it comes from different places. We've, this program started in 2004. So, most of the, or a lot of the time, we fund programs that are, that are all loan. So, they pay those back. It could be down payment assistance, it could be the single-family homeownership, it could be some developers. A lot of it came back from the workforce housing program that we did. So, every year, we get in some. Some years, we get in more than others. This year, we, we, we got a lot back. It's, well, let me say this. It's also sometimes it's, it's programs or projects that don't go forward, so that money is unallocated. So, that goes back into the pool for the next year.
Was that the case this year, or is this mainly just stuff being paid back?
Um, there was one project that came back. But the rest of it was from projects. Now, we won't be receiving any more workforce housing money. We've, that's, we've gotten all that back. So, sometimes it's, it's paid off, too. So, you can't count on that every year.
Right. That's really helpful. I just wanted to highlight it for a lot of reasons. First of all, they're great organizations that are taking this important work on, and wanted to thank, thank everybody for that. And it really represents this kind of spectrum of need in housing. I mean, you've got everything from repairing houses that, that folks are in, to the construction of new single-family homes, to the development of rental units, to helping folks hopefully escape homelessness or defer homelessness, hopefully not defer, but, so, I just think y'all did a great job in understanding the span of needs that are out there that are relating to housing. And so, I wanted to note that, as well as it is, it was a very robust year. And I think that that's important to understand, that sometimes these decisions will, will reap in the future, that we might not be here at this table to see that, but the good decisions that were made years ago, you know, we're, we're benefiting from now. So, y'all did a great job, as usual.
Well, and I'd just like to, I'd echo what Commissioner Jones said. There's not a silver bullet, and I think all the people here that work in affordable housing, it's not a matter, there's one program, if we just did that one program, we'd, we'd get rid of the problem. If it was that way, we'd be, we'd be wondrous, wondrous people, but it's not. All of you, as Commissioner Jones said, have a piece of the puzzle, and we thank you, and we thank Donna for kind of sorting through and getting the best practices, the best of the best with the money we have to spend.
Well, we are very fortunate here in western North Carolina to have all these folks.
We really are.
It's good work.
We really are, truly. Any other comments? Okay. Commissioner Jones, is there a motion to approve?
Oh, I will move to approve these applications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frost. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Then that resolution passes by seven to zero vote. Next, we have the AB Tech Capital Project Ordinance. And who, John will be doing that? Mr. Creighton?
Thank you, folks, the affordable housing folks. Thank you for sitting through, meeting. Bless your heart.
Bless your heart.
School and affordable housing folks. And I would recognize, School Board Chairman, former School Board Chairman, Al Whiteside is here, as well as School Board, current Buncombe County School Board Member, Pat Bryant, as well as Dr. Baldwin, and thank you. And also, Councilman Gordon Smith is here from City. Thank you, Gordon. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, just want to talk to you about the Rhododendron Project. I think as, as everybody knows, all the current things that are in Rhododendron are going to be moved into the new Allied Health Building, which, if you haven't seen the building or been in it, I encourage you to contact me, and we'll set up a time. The building has turned out extremely nice. Very impressed with, with just the functions and way it works and, and how it looks. And I think if nothing else, on the 1st of December, when they have open house, you'll be, you'll be really impressed. But anyway, we're emptying Rhododendron, and so that would be, that's one of the next projects that's on the list to, to rework. The building was built in the mid-'70s. It was an addition put on it in the '80s. I think if any of you have ever been in that building, obviously, I think the first thing you would say that the building is very dated. The way it's laid out is, is, is really bad. I think the total number of classrooms in the building is, is right at 45,000 square feet. I think there's eleven, or seven, rather, classrooms in the building. The halls are in the wrong location. If you go on the first floor, which is the basement that you enter around back off the large parking lot, it's really only half a floor. It's about 5,600 square feet that, for some reason, they never did anything with, other than they just left a dirt bank there. So, the debate is now that, I just got the program for the building yesterday from the architect. I've hired an architect, we advertised, and hired an architect just to do the programming. I've not negotiated a price with them for, to do services yet, because like I say, I wanted to find out what the program was first. And also, got to see them at risk onboard to help them with, with, with the prices, to help them make suggestions, to see how we can save money. So, at that stage, what right now is planned is cosmetology will move in a large section of the building, and then basically, the engineering programs, being engineering, electrical, and CAD will take up the rest of the building. And that really fills the building right now. That'll allow to empty some space in Elm that we, we really need to redo some, some things in that building. It'll also, where cosmetology's coming out, will allow the Craft Institute to move into that building, which will help empty the Inca campus. The, the budget right now is set at $7 million. Before I can start spending money and hiring people, I need, you know, I need a budget. And in, in this case, that's about $159 a square foot. Basically, right now, everybody's agreement that we just need to empty, just rip out the insides of the building. There's really nothing from the electrical to the roof that's worth salvaging. It'll allow us to go back in and, like I say, program the building to meet the needs that we need. Also, out of that money, I need to hire the architect, I need to hire engineers, I have to pay the CM, I need to do asbestos abatement, and also, I need to, to hire the concrete testing people. So, that per, that per square foot cost comes down, but I'm dealing with an unknown building. The building is very in it, energy inefficient. It has single-pane windows in it. It has a tar and gravel roof on it. So, the structure's sound, it just needs to be, it needs to be updated. It needs to be updated so we can use it another 40 years like it's been used in the past.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got questions.
Yes, sir.
This was all put in in 2000, here's February 2013. It gives a breakdown of everything that was supposedly going to be tied into the quarter cent sales tax. Rhododendron, there's only $3 million figured in to Rhododendron, so we're doubling, plus going up another million. Personally, the only thing I'd like to say is, set it aside until you can come up with some kind of true numbers, because seven more million dollars, the total package of what was voted on back when they did the quarter cent sales tax was 100 million, basically less than 100 million dollars. Where this pushes that number to 105 million, not counting wanting to do work on the Elms, and, you know, to save money on the Allied Healthcare Building by about $13 million. But then, we did a parking deck, so that basically took that up, and then we did an outside building. So, we've turned something into what was supposed to be, something that was for the school, and I am for the school 100 percent. But I just, I, I don't know who could get their head around that you come out with numbers $3 million and then turn it into $7 million. It's just, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a number that's picked out of the sky at the present time.
Well, I think, in this case, I think the $3 million is a number that was picked out of the sky. I can't find anybody that put the original numbers together. Nobody will lay claim to, "I did those." But I can tell you that when you look at cost per square foot, and when you're, when you're doing what we're going to do to this building to make it usable for another 40 years, and I've got, I've got to pay those soft costs, being architects and engineers, it's going to take that kind of money.
But it goes back to the same thing. This, here is a Capital Project Ordinance dated February the 5th, 2013. That came before the board. All this stuff was on it, and Rhododendron was on this one at $3 million, too.
I understand.
And this thing come out, it, it breaks down, that the whole package comes out at $84 million. That's what emails and everything from AB Tech said, that these things that they were looking for, that, you know, this is, this was the breakdown. It didn't say that the AB Tech quarter cent sales tax would be a forever deal. It's supposed to, it, I sat, I wasn't in this seat, but I was over where you're standing, and understanding that this would sunset in X amount of years. The way we're going right now, it's never going to sunset. We just seem to be, it's, it's turned into something, you know, here's $3 million. You could say four, four and a half, five million. Two more million dollars, I could probably understand, but you've, it's doubling. It's over doubling, you know? You built a building, you build a parking deck for $13 million. You built a building beside it, I think you said, that, you know, that wasn't part of the original deal. It was basically $8 million. And we're going to spend $7 million on a building that's, you know, this old.
But structurally, the building is in good shape.
But I didn't say the building wasn't in good shape. We've got good buildings in other areas that's in shape, but, you know, it goes back, we've, we've took Inca, the $3 million on the outside, we've took $3 million for the inside away. So, there's $6 million that's, that's running around there, and I want them to have what they need. But everything that I see here is what was voted on by this commission. And now, we're turning around, and we're doubling down on it. You know, instead of going to be $84 million, we'll be at 160 million before it's over. And that's going to be in the quarter sales tax thing.
If I could say one thing, those numbers originally were put together about five or six years ago, and we've seen increases in construction costs. So, I mean, I do think that it's going to be significantly more than three.
I understand. You know, cars go up a little bit, too, but I've never seen anything double in less than three years.
Those numbers are much older than three years. They were put together in the 9 and 10 timeframe.
Well, they were, they were voted on on February the 3rd, 2013. That's the numbers that was voted on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to see a true number. That's all I'm asking.
Can I make a motion to approve the resolution?
Okay. Been a motion by Commissioner Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
I don't understand why, you know, you've got a first and you've got a second, and here's the discussion. The discussion is, it's just whatever you want to spend is okay? You know, is that, that's okay with everybody? You know, I'm on a board over there. I love that school, but I, I want it to have what it needs. That's what I did when I came here. They took a building that was $52 million and cut it down to $41 million. It got moved, it got fixed, but we've got other stuff in the process. Only thing I care is true numbers and go with what y'all voted on. Holly, you and David Gant were part of the vote on this, this deal for AB Tech for this quarter cent sales tax. You promised the people, now, if you, if one of them gets the promise, that's okay, because it's already past the budget that, that was agreed to. So, I'm fine with it. I'll vote for it. I have no problem going ahead and voting for it. But the fact is, is we've just busted the budget. And then, nobody seems to care about that. They don't care about what they save from up here. They don't care what they save from up here.
Mr. Farrar, all you can do when a project is done, if you want to move ahead and you want to build things, you got to take your best guess what it's going to be. Materials go up, things change, designs change. You've been a big part of the change of the whole project, the whole bond issue, and we appreciate that. But it's changed a lot, and, and hopefully for the better. Sometimes it costs more. But the question is, do we want to have facilities for the people at AB Tech that are good to train people, to get the jobs, to have the quality of life that we want for people in Buncombe County? And the way I look at it is, we do the best we can, but in a $100 million project, I don't see many of them that come in on the dollar. It's just, it's just hard to do. And I think it's hard for private business, it's hard for government.
But I think, I think on, on our side, standing here, is that, I mean, you know that I'm very dollar-conscious. We've built a lot of things, and, you know, I think that we've been, we've been very successful as keeping them in, in budget. This was an estimate that was put out, like the county manager said, a number of years ago, and these are, these are real true dollars today to, to rehab this building, to make it very usable.
How, how much did Mandy's building change from the time that it was brought forward? The $46 million for the Cox Avenue?
It's a, it's, it's a different...
Um, it went, the first time we brought it in was at $35 million, and when you, when you finally approved it, it was well over 40.
Wanda, did, how, are we, in terms of the initial, this is, in some ways, this isn't related to what this conversation might, I'm going to get back to a couple of accusations in a second, but in terms of the collection of the, the quarter cents, in terms of the initial estimate back in the day, and where we are now, we're trending much higher, correct?
We're trending higher, and anytime we start a project or are ready to start a project with AB Tech, we have a model that we put this into so that we know exactly what we already owe. We're conservative in our projections on sales tax, but we make sure that the sales tax model can cover what we're asking you to approve, and that works with Rhododendron. The next building, we are hoping to actually, Elm is on that list, but we're actually hoping to pay for it with the sale of Inca. So, we do watch all the moving pieces.
And, and in terms of kind of the, the idea, the, the sunsetting, would we still be on track to do that?
With the addition of this, we would. I mean, we're not going to be able to add any more to do that. I do want to remind everybody, it will be a future board that decides whether or not that sun sets. That was only a resolution that said you recommend it. It's, it's not something that's binding on a future board, so...
But in terms of, just from the accountability of moi, in terms of the, the big, and we've shifted. We have needs change, our community changes, and we just, we can't just be stuck. But that said, the, the big projects, the big things that we did, that were proposed to the community, those things have been the things that we put forward.
Oh, yeah.
And if I'm understanding you right, those things will be complete in the timeline that...
They will.
Now, I'll be gone, for sure, but, but we're, we're on track with the time, because we're, partly because we're ahead in revenue collection.
We're on track with the time. And just literally, how fast can we move? I mean, when you're building a building as big as Allied Health and the parking deck, and this classroom building and the flex building, I mean, it takes a little time to get those done, so we're just now ready to start another project, so, but we're on target.
One thing that I don't understand, I thought we were selling Inca to do South. That's what I thought. I didn't have a clue that...
Yeah, we're selling Inca to do Elm.
Well, we should have $6 million left from Inca that hasn't been used at Inca.
We had to replace a chiller at Inca, so we spent about $800,000 or $900,000 on Inca, so there's a little over five left in that one.
So, Commissioner Farrar, because I feel like there was a little bit of accusation towards me, I will just say, I appreciate, I appreciate that you look at the numbers. I think that's, I think that's a plus for our board. I think that's part of our job, I really do. I think in terms of your good, I, I, I like that you flagged it, I really do. I do feel like we got an adequate answer from Mr. Creighton, and I feel very comfortable with how he explained the, the cost of what Rhododendron is needing now. So, I, and I, I think it's true that, that he's not pulling numbers out of the air anymore. I mean, he's got really clear understanding of the need. So, so I just want to say that I think you're totally right to, to be fiscally eyeballing this and to ask that good question. I think that's right on. I also think that Mr. Creighton gave a very adequate, great answer, and because of that answer, I do feel comfortable voting for the higher, the higher number, so...
I can understand that, but we haven't had an architect on site. We don't have anything yet except a new number.
No, we've, we've, we've got an architect. I mean, like I say, we're doing the, but we're doing, the program is finished, that's what the architect's been doing. And we, like I say, we have a CM at risk onboard also. So, trying to get, you know, refine those numbers, but, you know, this is the, the recommended budget that we need to, to have for this project.
Okay. If it comes in under this, what do we do?
It just goes back into the Inca, I mean, the AB Tech fund balance.
Or can go, it backs down the, we can take the quarter cent back, and if it costs $5 million, then we can leave the $2 million, not taking that from the quarter cent sales tax.
That is an option.
We will only take from the sales tax what it actually takes to build this building. We won't take any more.
So, it's... Still confused on Inca. I thought that would, we had discussions over at school about using that money to do South.
Vice Chair?
So, so we will, we will have another, we will, Dr. Green? Dr. Green? I'm sorry. So, we will have another one of these at the time that shows the X number of dollars, $7 million, and it's going to show the actual amount. We'll have another, we'll have, it'll look very similar to this, except it's a budget ordinance. It'll come back to us, same package that we'll see after...
You'll see the actual, when we, all the bids and everything in, if, you'll, you'll see actual numbers.
We'll see the actual dollars at that time and be able to...
But that's several months from now, just so everybody's not expecting it quickly.
And we'll be able to, to comment, approve, say what we want to at that time also, right?
Yes, sir.
And I would just suggest, and I too want to, am, am very grateful for the, for the, for the digging that... for the digging that Commissioner Farrar does on this, and also, I am thankful that the county is handling this construction, and that, 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 that people like, you know, Mr. Creighton and others are handling this construction, because, I mean, we go and look at the, the Allied Health Building and the amount of money that was saved, and then the program of that, and everything was, is just, is phenomenal. I mean, it's already been said, 10 to 13 million dollars in that, in that structure. But, but I would suggest, when we've got something like this of this magnitude, and we're probably gonna end up getting in this, getting in this type of conversation, maybe we could have a little bit more in it, you know, like the, you know, the design or the floor plan or some, some additional information, because not everybody has been to it. I mean, I mean, I remember it, it, you know, to me, it must've been originally laid out as a dorm, because it's got, I mean, when I walked, it's got halls, choo, 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 you know, just right down the middle of it. And so, I think, you know, anytime we can save a structure and it saves us money, that we, we oughta be able to do that. I too am overwhelmed by the, the amount of money that things cost anymore and how it continues, continues to go up. But that would, that would be my, my suggestions and thoughts on it, so.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, only, only other comment I'd like to have is not about anything that's in the 7, 8 million dollar range. Please, let's don't put it on the consent agenda. That's a lot of dollars, you know? You're stacking a bunch of stuff together, that is, that's a lot of dollars. And, you know, you have to hunt it and pull it, that's, that's still a lot of dollars. This is, this is building some schools, we, we just, let's give some property away for apartments that wasn't on the consent agenda. So, anytime we do this, I'd appreciate it, as long as I'm here that we bring it forward.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the resolution, or excuse me, the ordinance, AB Tech Capital Project Ordinance?
Uh, we've already got one, don't we?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. We sure did. My bad.
Time to move right along.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ordinance is adopted by a seven to zero vote. Next up, we have board appointments. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, are there any nominations? We have two reappointment possibilities.
I'll nominate Donald Strebb and Claudia Sherry.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any other nominations? All those in favor of those individuals say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee has 10 vacancies. Are there any nominations for that board?
I'll nominate Linda Burrow, Eleanor Lane, John Bernhardt, O.E. Starnes, and Margaret Davis.
Second.
And a motion in second. Any other nominations? All those in favor of those individuals appointed to that committee say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. They are so appointed. We have during pre-session elected to interview the Tourism and Development Authority and the Board of Adjustment vacancies. And the final appointment we'll have tonight will be the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board. Any nominations?
I'd nominate Mickey Turner.
Are there any other, been a motion, and I'll second it. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Mr. Turner appointed to that board say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. He is appointed. Do we have any closed session tonight?
No, no, no.
There's any closed session tonight? Nobody knows of one.
I think we ran that horse.
We've got a lot done in, uh, two hours, haven't we? Alright, the only announcement we have is October 24, 30 is the next regular meeting of the commission in room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. Are there any other matters to come before the board? None? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.